I'm going to call to order our Planning Commission meeting. And we will start this evening with an invocation by Mayor Lloyd. You'll bow your head.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for all you do for us. We thank you for our city, for the opportunities that are going to be presented tonight, as well as the opportunities that are to come. Father, we pray that you would guide this meeting. May you lead us, guide the decisions that are made. May they be in accordance with the best opportunities for the city of Collegedale and in accordance with your will. To Christ we pray, amen.
A roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Lloyd?
Here.
Member Freeson?
Yeah.
Member Lehman?
Here.
Member Moody?
Here.
Vice Chairman Gibbons? Chairwoman Gray?
Here. And our next item is our minutes from our previous meeting. I'm ready to entertain a motion on that.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yeah.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Yes. Thank you. Our first two items on our agenda involve the Chastain properties. And as in previous cases, I'm going to ask this evening, since Vice Chair Gibbons isn't here this evening and because my family and I help with events on this property, I need somebody else to chair these two items on our agenda. So I'm going to open the floor for nomination on who to chair the meeting.
I'm nominated, Todd.
Okay, would you accept, Todd?
Sure.
Okay. And so I guess we need a roll call vote on that, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yes.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So let's, old business, none, new business. We'll start with subdivision plat 2023-06. Jason, if you want to take us through that.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jason Allen, the city planner. So sub 2023-06, this is the eastern preliminary plat following the approval of the Chastain Trails Development, which was approved last year under ordinance 1113. The eastern property consists of 275 acres and will be divided into 335 residential lots along with community spaces. The project is concurrently being concurrently processed with sub 2023-07, which is the western portion of the overall Chastain Trails Development project. So here's a vicinity map of the eastern portion. So right down the middle on the left side is Edgerton Road. So the existing zoning for this area is the Chastain Trails PUD. Their surrounding is, to the north, we have agricultural. To the east, we have agricultural. Again, to the south, we have low-density, single-family. And to the west, we have the Chastain West PUD and low-density, single-family. So for the existing land uses, we have the single-family residence that's currently on the property. To the north is vacant, to the east is vacant, to the south is residential homes, and to the west is residential homes. So here's a site plan. This is the southern portion of the site plan, showing what the track is going to look like. The following slide shows the northern portion of the same track. It's just set on two different pages. So not too many comments from staff on this one, since it was already approved through a PUD. So it was reviewed and it does follow all the preliminary plat regulations and all the zoning regulations set forth by the city of Collegedale. There were the following conditions added onto the PUD, so those will follow the prelim. So with that, staff is recommending the approval of sub 2023-06.
Okay, so just for clarification, the 06 plat is preliminary plat for the east portion?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Of the property that was rezoned or as a PUD?
Correct, yeah. So the PUD was separated into two different applications, one for the rest and one for the east. So this is the eastern one.
Okay, any questions for staff?
On the prior slide, you said additional?
I'm sorry, these conditions, they were already the ones set forth by the PUD. So they're just staying with the prelim.
So the point, those were conditions at rezoning for the PUD, and those conditions have been met per the preliminary plat, based on your review?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I think we'll hear from the applicant. Help me out. So the applicant is here. If you could come forward. And is there any other individuals that want to speak on this matter?
Mike Price, MAP Engineers. And so, yes, we are prepared to get this project, I think, underway. And so the preliminary plat has been prepared and does meet staff recommendations. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
With hearing?
No approval.
Great. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Has been seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yes.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the second item under new business, which I think we just talked about was the west side preliminary plat, but it's subdivision 2023-07?
Yeah, a little bit more deja vu for tonight. Sub 2023-07. This one is located at 120 Lee Highway. Sub 2023-07 is the prelim western plat following the approval of the Chastain Trails Development PUD approved last year under ordinance 1113. The western property consists of 132 acres and will be divided into 177 residential lots along with community spaces. The project is being concurrently processed with the one, the project that we just talked about, sub 2023-06. So here's a vicinity map. Edgerton Road runs right down the center right here. So for the current zoning, it's Chastain Trails PUD. To the north, you have ag, and to the east, you have Chastain East PUD and Low Density, Single Family. To the south, you have Low Density, Single Family, and to the west, you have Agricultural. So the current land use is the single-family residence. To the north is vacant, to the east is single-family residence, to the south is residential homes, and to the west is vacant. So here's the plat for the western portion. Edgerton Road runs north to south here, and Lee Highway is up here to the north. So the submitted prelim plat has been found to comply with the city of Collegedale zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. And just like the last project, these are the same conditions that were approved last year, so they're sticking with the prelim. So with that, staff recommends the approval of sub 2023-07. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, any questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this one, other than the applicant? I'm assuming it's the same?
I just want to sit around here and see that we have the gentleman very much.
If the applicant come up, then I anticipate you'll answer any questions, if we have any?
Yes.
Mike Price, again, any questions, happy to answer. Otherwise, I think it's straightforward and meets all the conditions.
Any questions or motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
A motion to approve that has been seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yeah.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next case is a zoning case, 2023-03. It's along Appson Pike, and I'll pass that to staff for going over it for us. Thank you.
So zone 2023-03. So the applicant is proposing to rezone approximately 1.36 acres located at 10965 Appson Pike. They requested to rezone the parcel from agricultural to low-density, single, and to family residential, R2. So here's a vicinity map, Sandy Trails to the west. Appson Pike runs right along here. So the current zoning classification is ag. So the proposed zoning would be low-density, single, and two-family residential, or R2. To the north, you have R2 as well. To the east, you have ag. To the south, you have ag. And to the west, you have R2 as well. So currently, there's a single-family residence on the property. To the north, you have residential homes. To the east, you have residential homes. To the south, you have residential homes. To the west, along Sandy Trails, there's duplex units. So here's a proposed site plan. The applicant is only rezoning the property now, but in the future, he wishes to probably subdivide the property to be able to post, replace more duplex units. The reasoning for that is because there's currently a residence that sits here, and he doesn't want to subdivide the house in half, because he wants to be able to live there while he works on the other projects that he has. So the general area surrounding the subject property is zoned as low-density, single, and two-family residential units, or R2. There's existing duplexes already located across Appson Pike on Sandy Trail. As the city grows, higher-density housing, such as duplex homes, become more desirable along major corridors such as Appson Pike. Staff believes a rezone from agricultural to low-density, single, and two-family residential is more compatible with surrounding area and any future uses. The applicant does have intentions of subdividing the property at a future date, but this process can be done at the staff level. It should be noted that Appson Pike Widening Project, conducted under TDOT, may take right-of-way in the future. We did reach out to TDOT District 2, but we didn't have any replies. And the applicant, Philip Kim, he did confirm that TDOT has not reached out to him at this time. So for now, there's no conditions or anything that will place on the property, since we can't really justify that, since no right-of-way is being taken at the time. So with that, staff is recommending the approval of zone 2023-03. And if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. And I believe the applicant is here as well.
Okay, I have one quick question, and then we'll, and if anybody else has questions, then we'll ask the applicant to come forward. What is the buffering between, you know, if we vote this rezoning, what's the buffering between the agricultural, single-family homes, and if we zone this R2?
So what it is currently, or what it's going to go to?
Well, what would be the buffering if we vote this? Or is there buffering?
I believe off the frontage, it's 35 feet. And then I believe you'll have 10 on the sides, 20 on the rear. It depends if it's going to be duplex or single-family as well, so.
Okay, so it would depend on what's eventually built?
Exactly, yeah.
These areas? Okay, thank you. Any questions before I ask the applicant?
So bring up the slide that shows the different layout of it.
I'm sorry.
Could you go back a slide? Yeah, right there. So my concern is TDOT, because we know that's the next phase, and it may not be for three or four years. And TDOT just did not respond to us, is that?
Yeah, I did call, sent him an email twice, and just didn't hear anything. Had no response.
So it sure would help me if the words to the street were in black. I don't know if you have any control over that, but?
I don't. That's all, Hamilton County, yes.
I couldn't tell you, even with my contacts, what that says.
So that, right here to the east, sorry, to the west, the Sandy Trail, to the north is Shortcut Road.
And McDonald's right there.
Yeah, McDonald's here.
Do we have any idea when TDOT is looking to?
We don't.
The next phase on this widening project?
It could be six months, or it could be 20 years from now, so. That was part of the answers we were trying to get, but didn't hear any.
So they haven't started by any right-of-way at this point?
No, not that I'm aware of.
The property behind that, the outline of the blue, I can't see the blue. Is that Mr. Kim's property, or is that somebody else's?
I'm not sure if he owns that, off the top of my head.
It's not your property?
Mr. Kim, would you go ahead and come up and state your name and address, please?
It's Philip Kim, and the address is 10965 Appson Pike.
Okay. And so, just so we can hear it on the record, the question was whether he owns the property behind it, and he said that he did not.
Not at this time. No, I do not.
And I did drive by there this afternoon, and those are single-family homes along McDonald Road. And if, you know, we don't know what TDOT's going to do, but you as the landowner, what are your thoughts as far as developing it, knowing that a major road's going to be, is planned to come through there?
Well, I think unless there's clarity, I mean, I don't know how we hold up progress based on what we don't know. If we had any idea, if they reached out to me, I would adjust for that, yeah.
So what are your thoughts now? Are you looking at a single-family residence, or a duplex? Or what are your plans for the?
I'd like to put a duplex on there, but we're going to keep the single-family home for now, yeah.
And it looks like the drawing that we received with our packet, it looks like eventually it would be subdivided in three?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the problem that I'm having is the house has a lot of value. So part of the reason I didn't want to take it down is if I took away the house that's functioning and livable with a value to get another lot, I'm just throwing my good money after bad. So it's always kind of an issue for small developments like this to figure out, like, where the value is. And so on this one, we just decided to keep the house. So, and we've put money in for, you know, just to, new kitchens and stuff like that, new flooring. So there's been enough money put in there that I, it may not even, I may not request it in the future, so. Currently, right now, I'm just looking for a two-lot subdivision.
But the case before us is a zoning.
Right.
Okay, to change the zoning. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this case? Okay. Further discussion or a motion?
Looks to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yes.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Yes. Okay, now we move into another zoning case. And on this, I want to disclose that my husband is a professor in the School of Visual Art and Design at Southern Adventist University, and our next three cases have to do with Southern Adventist University. Okay, so our first one is zoning 2023-02. And staff, if you will take it from there.
Yeah, so zoning 2023-02. So the applicant is proposing to rezone two parcels, 4690 and 4688 University Drive, along the east side of University Drive. This would go from low-density, single, and two-family residential district, R2, to the university district, U1. So here's the vicinity map. You have Southern Village right there directly to the north, and this is University Drive here. So the current zoning is R2. To the north, you have university. To the east, you have university. To the south, you have R2. And to the west, you have university. So the current land use for the northern parcel, there is a residential home. To the north, you have university. To the east, you have university uses. To the south, residential home. And to the west, you have university uses as well. So here's the site plan. So for the rezone, only the top two parcels here will be rezoned. And then at the staff level, we will be abandoning these lot lines here, so Southern can take this into their parent parcel. Here's a little, just colored, just to show where the rezone's going to happen. So the two parcels located at 4690 and 4688 University Drive are currently owned by Southern Adventist University. The university has filed a request to rezone the two parcels from low-density, single, and two-family residential district, R2 to university. So the proposal would allow the university to abandon both lot lines at the staff level. That's under case number sub 2023-04. And that would allow the university to absorb the land in the university's parent parcel. And that parcel number is 141031S018. So the overall goal is to allow the development of more on-campus student housing through the construction of student apartments. The apartment complex, it would be part of the existing Southern Village apartments. So basically, for them to be able to build apartments, they have to do a rezone, and they have to abandon the lot lines for that to be allowed. So with that, staff recommends the approval of zone 2023-02. Not to jump ahead, but the next case would be a right-of-way abandonment, which is part of this case, just to make you guys aware.
Okay. Any questions before I ask the applicant to come forward? Okay. Would you please come forward and state your name and guess your phone number?
Marty Hamilton, Southern Adventist University, PO Box 370, Collegedale. Any questions? Or I can give you the, did you know the rationale of what we're trying to achieve? Okay, yeah. The university's experiencing growth in enrollment, and we're needing more apartments. So that's the purpose of it.
Is your intention to match the apartments behind?
Yes, sir. They will be built identically.
Okay.
So there's a couple of changes on the inside, but they will look the same, landscaping, everything will match.
How many buildings would you be putting in?
Right now, the Board of Trustees has approved two. So we're doing the planning on how to fit them. And the abandonment of this road right-of-way, which is the next one, is also, came about because of our investigation on adding a second building.
And what about parking?
What's that?
How much parking would you have?
Oh, you would, Dan, do we have a number? We're definitely adding more parking. To the first one that we're building right now, we're adding a larger parking lot. And then when the second one comes, we will be adding parking there, too.
And if you'll just say your name?
My name's Dan Moose with Austin Engineering. And I believe, and maybe Jason can back me up on this, I think the ordinance requires 1.75 spaces per unit, and we would meet the city ordinance. If not more.
Yeah, more.
He wants more, so.
Because we're adding some parking spots right now this summer, just to help our students with the parking situation there.
Is your long-term goal to do more of this along the road on those properties?
Yes, ultimately, I think we're looking at two, maybe three buildings. Originally, our board had voted for three. Then we came up with another opportunity, so we were, cut that back to two. But basically, it's a very successful apartment for our upperclassmen. So right now, we have not defined how many more buildings, but I would say in the two to three range.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. If there are members of the public who would like to speak to the case, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
This is a very simple question, and I wish I already knew the answer. I'm from 4686 University Drive. We will be the neighbors to this. I'm Rachel Byrd.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And I just wondered if they are planning, if they own the land behind that, and if they're planning to use that also to, as building the apartments?
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Michael Byrd, Rachel's husband. My wife does work at Southern, so it is a sensitive topic. When we purchased the property, right beside us was a R2 house. So the Southern did not own that property beside us. So, and so having, having two buildings, two apartment buildings on this property would not be comfortable for us. I've talked with Marty about this a little bit, and he, I thought maybe there's going to be one on there. But if it's up close to our house, we're, you know, it's going to be a little bit tough to be comfortable with all that activity and that we have not had before. So it definitely concerns me. You know, maybe if there was one, and it was to the furthest point away from us, but these are very large buildings. And to fit two of them on there is going to take up every bit of that property to get, to fit them on there, if, maybe even if you can fit them on there, but it'll be, it'll be tight. So. So my concern is a next-door homeowner, that it will change the atmosphere of our property, so.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Have we seen any type of plat, the way the layout will be? I know this is zoning, but?
Yeah, a couple of months ago, we did see one. But that wasn't said in stone. That was just through a pre-doc meeting. But either way, whatever they bring in, they're going to have to meet landscape and make sure they meet all the minimum requirements with buffering and stuff for that.
Is it tied on the property with the two buildings?
Is it tied? I'm sorry, can you?
Is it, with the two buildings, is it taking up most of the land? Are they going to be knocking arms with the neighbors, or?
Not necessarily. I mean, like I said, they still have to meet the landscape buffers. So whether that's, if they're able to fit one or two, that's, can it be up to their engineer to try to figure that out? But from what I saw at first, I believe they did meet the landscape requirements.
Okay, and can you remind me what the landscape buffer requirement would be between, if we vote this U1 district, between that and the residential?
Give us one second, we need to see what that is. I believe it's 35, but I'm not.
35 feet?
I, we're looking it up, I'm not 100%.
Okay, okay. And that would be a planted buffer, because there's nothing that exists there now?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
A question, are these two new units completely contained on, on the two lots that you're asking for zoning, or do they overlap onto adjacent?
And if you could address that in the previous two questions?
Would you repeat that?
These two new buildings, I'm looking here at.
Right, the two lots.
Would, would the new buildings overlap onto existing university property, or are they totally contained within these two lots that you're?
We have not finalized on that plan, because first, we wanted to address the road abandonment, then we wanted to address the zoning to put that in, in context with our apartment, apartments. So it will take both lots, plus some other additional land that we have in order to make this fit. So we're interested in being friendly with our neighbors, we also own all the land around them, so we still want to be sensitive to their concerns, both with landscaping noise. So right now, I'm working with our engineers to figure out what is the best presentation of those buildings, because we want to incorporate them into the existing complex.
And how many students will be living?
There's 32 students is the max.
Okay, per building?
Per building.
Okay. And have there been any concerns, noise, other concerns from the existing buildings that you have now?
Not that it has been reported to me, and, you know, and I'm very involved in the operations of the campus. The only, I will share with you, working with Collagestale Police Department, we were having trouble exiting the complex onto College Drive East, and so we worked with CPD to figure out how to get our students that go to class out of that complex, so we actually switched things and have all of our students exiting out on University Drive. That has actually helped the safety of the elementary students.
Is there a height, I mean, I'm assuming the zone has a height requirement?
Yeah.
Maximum height, are the existing ones two-story, I mean, I?
Yeah, they're two-story.
So the planned ones would be two-story since they're?
Right, yeah, they'd be the same, so they would comply with all of our regulations as a city. Okay?
Thank you.
And then it'd be a 10-foot planted front yard for screening.
Okay, so there would be a 10-foot planted buffer between?
Yeah.
The Byrd home and these?
And then for the, the rear yard, the setbacks would be 30 feet.
Thirty feet?
Yeah, for the property.
Just a quick, I'm sorry, did you say front was 10, or side is 10?
It'd be both. It'd be both.
Okay, so the side is 10, the rear is?
No hardscape within 10-foot on any side essentially, and then the structure would be 30.
What's the total acres of these both lots?
I zoomed in on mine, one's .62 and one's .69 acres. Okay, further discussion, Mr. Byrd?
I would like to propose that before the zoning be approved, that Southern would give us the, the engineering work or the placement of the, these buildings.
Thank you for that comment.
The total is 1.31 acres.
How much?
Oh, 1.31.
Are there further questions, further discussion? Further brainstorms?
Do we know how soon you'll have kind of a final plot, if you will, so we could see that? I'm concerned about the space and squeezing it on there.
We always do quality development, as, as far as my experience with working at Southern, so each building is actually about 10,700 square feet, the footprint of the building is probably closer to like 6,500. So I don't think, I think we could actually fit one on each parcel, but we're trying to make it friendly to the other apartments, not isolated, but it's incorporated, so to answer your question is, I'm working with the engineers now, and we've not settled on what is the best strategy. But it probably will be probably another three, four weeks before we get there.
And how many students live in all of these apartments right now?
About 300.
300, okay, and so far, no problems?
No, no, and we have resident assistants, we have two deans assigned to this area that, that rotate, we, but we have literally two older students that are resident assistants in each building. And so there's night check, and there's supervision up there.
They're nice, my, both my daughters have lived in the apartments over there, so they're nice apartments.
Would there be a possibility of increasing that landscaping buffer? I'm going to ask staff if, you know, if we add another five feet, would that help, because I think the issue that we're hung up on here is, is, is the adjoining against the residential use.
It would be up to the commission to give a proposal for that, and then the applicant would need to agree to that condition.
Am I misreading this, I thought this was 3.99 acres?
I believe it's 1.31.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
So the drawing that we have has multiple, like the abandonment of the right-of-way, the right-of-way on the back?
Yeah, so I believe that's all six parcels together, it's a 3.99 for the abandonment. But the 1.31 is just the two parcels that are being rezoned.
Okay. It just said, current 3.99, two lots, that's why I was questioning it.
I'm not sure.
Is that part of the staff report? That you're looking at?
It's got a how.
So you're looking at the one that's for the right-of-way abandonment, which is number five, and we're on number four?
Okay.
So in our agenda packet, that's page 27?
I have no other questions.
Are you said, you do have other?
I do not.
Okay.
Ruthie, I'd like to make a motion that the board would, would like to see, or the commission would like to see, a preliminary layout before we move forward with this. It can be a very preliminary layout with perhaps just the outline of the buildings and, and, and the roadways, so that we can get an idea, we need to be sensitive to the neighbors. Personally, I'm inclined to think this is a very favorable thing to do for the university and for the community, but I think it's important to see that, so I make that motion.
Okay.
And we ask for that at the next meeting.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, is there further discussion?
What's your timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, yes, the commissioner said we should be able to give you something for the next meeting.
Yeah, and we're not looking, I'm not personally not looking for a lot of detail on this thing, or a lot of engineering, but just something to get an idea of how the, how the community lays out, what the relationships are to the neighbors and, and whatnot.
Okay.
So I don't want, I don't want you to spend a lot of money on
No, we can, we can.
Drawings and engineering and whatnot, that's not the point here, the point is to understand how this is going to finally fit into the community.
And our design is?
Our design is very much about the safety of that complex, that's our, our biggest concern, is how vehicles are coming in and out of that, for, not only for the safety of our Collagestale residents at Drive, University Drive, or Coll, or College Drive East, it, it's also for the safety of the students. You know, and that live there, and that we don't have a lot of through traffic, but we are working and following city guidelines on the development of this, and that would include whether it was a single-family home there, or, or a complex like this.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yeah.
Member Freeson?
Yes.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Yes.
And then I know our abandonment of right-of-way goes along with that zoning, so does that automatically postpone that, or can we still talk about that, Jason, could you advise?
I could go over it, but it'd be best to postpone that as well, or defer it.
Okay.
Because this one was really dependent on the rezone, so we could do the subdivision, and then the abandonment.
Okay.
So I'll go over it.
Sure, so we know what the full picture is?
Yeah.
For next one, okay.
So this is abandonment 2023-01. So the applicant is proposing to abandon an unopened 20-foot right-of-way, located to the rear of 4690, 4688, 4686, 4682, 4680, 4678, University Drive. This proposal is contingent on the previous heard rezone of two parcels along the east side of University Drive. So here's a vicinity map, in the yellow, that's kind of hard to see, is the unopened right-of-way behind the parcels, here are the two parcels that we've been discussing. So I'll go ahead and skip over this, since we went over this in the previous project. So here's, here's the site plan again, so here's the, the right-of-way that's being requested to be abandoned. And here's an enlarged view. These are the two parcels in the last proposal. So the proposal is connected to two separate projects, which can be referenced under zoning case 2023-02 and sub 2023-04. The need for a right-of-way abandonment is triggered by sub 2023-04, as unopened right-of-way is a part of the two lots that are being subdivided. Parcels along with 4686, 4682, 4680, and 4678 University Drive currently show an unopened right-of-way in connection to the recorded plot. Sub 2023-04 has triggered the need to abandon the unopened right-of-way to properly replat the area. So the way this works, each property owner on either side will receive 10, a 10-foot portion of the 20-foot right-of-way that is connected to their parcel. So four out of six parcels are owned by Southern Adventist University, the remaining privately-owned property owners have agreed to receiving land from the right-of-way abandonment. So the subdivision that we're talking, or I'm referencing, that's all done at the staff level, to abandon those lot lines. So this is changing a little bit, it's going to be up to, I guess, the commission to defer this one as well, through a motion.
Okay.
I moved it to the floor.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yeah.
Member Freeson?
Yeah.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Yes.
Okay, our last case this evening is another zoning case, 2023-04.
The zoning case 2023-04, the applicant is proposing to rezone seven parcels along the west side of Sunkist Tier, from low-density, single, and two-family residential district R2 to university district U1. The properties are located at 4862, 4864, 4891, 4893, 4887. One of the parcels does not have an address, so it's parcel number 151B-C-008 and 4883 Sunkist Tier. I do want to note that in the, in the staff report, I did reference east, but it's actually the west side of Sunkist Tier. So here's a vicinity map of the seven parcels along Sunkist Tier on the west side, and here is Collagestale Academy Middle School. So the current zoning is R2, to the north, we have university, to the east, we have R2, to the south, we have Ag, and to the west, we have R1L. So current uses are residential homes all along those seven parcels, to the north is university, uses to the east is residential homes, to the south is Ag, and to the west is Collagestale Academy. So here's a site plan or a plot of what's happening, so the seven parcels here are all going to abandon their, their lot lines, so they could be taken into the university's parent parcel, which is part of Collagestale Academy Middle School as well. Here's an enlarged view, so Sunkist Tier is here, and Collagestale Drive East is to the north. So zoning case 2023-04 would allow the applicant to develop future parking and recreational areas to expand the existing Collagestale Academy Middle School. Sub 2023-05 is being processed on the staff level, and is dependent on the approval of the zoning case 2023-04. If a discussed rezone is approved, the applicant will abandon all lot, all lot lines with parcels located at, all the parcels located at Sunkist Tier. Southern Adventist parent parcel 141031.00 will, will absorb the existing properties after the abandonment. So six out of the seven properties are currently owned by the applicant Southern Adventist University and Collagestale Academy. The remaining property is currently under contract to be purchased by Southern Adventist, and the current property owner for the remaining property has consented to the rezone during the escrow process. So with that, staff recommends the approval of zoning case 2023-04.
Would the applicant like to add any detail to that?
Thank you, Marty Hamilton, Southern Adventist University, we're the applicant on behalf of Collagestale Academy. I don't know if the commissioners know, but the land that the university holds, we own the land that the academy, the elementary sit on. So as the custodians of the land, we're supportive of what they're doing, and what they're requesting. And obviously, the advantage for Southern is the old elementary building. And obviously, the advantage for Southern is the old elementary building would be incorporated into our academic program. So it's really kind of a benefit for both entities. But we are supportive of what the academy is doing and expanding their, their facility.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Ready for motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yay.
Mayor Lloyd?
Yay.
Member Freesen?
Yes.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gray?
Yes. And before we finish up, are there any additional staff reports this evening?
Yeah, so I really, last time we talked, I let you guys know we went out for bid for the rezoning, or doing the rewrite of our ordinance. So today, we did close that, that bid, and we did get two, so we're going to go, come through those, and we should have at least one that probably meet our standards, and we should start that rewrite pretty soon.
Okay, so just to, so it's, you're outsourcing, looking at all of our zoning and having it rewritten, and looking for consistency and coherency and?
Yeah.
For the future?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, thank you all for being here this evening, I appreciate it. And with that, we are adjourned.